All right, so it's five o'clock on Monday, December 20th, 2021. I'll call the, call the Village Board of Oregon to order Candy, please.
Beshin?
Here.
Molly?
Here.
Glush?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Stitch?
Here.
Here.
And Carlene said she's gonna be a few minutes late.
Okay.
She's driving.
Perfect, okay. All right, so let's, we'll see how tonight goes. It's, I'm ready for Christmas, I don't know about you, but this is our last meeting of the year. And, uh, so, ready for Christmas. All right, so let's go to three, let's do approval of December 6th. 2021 Village Board Meeting Minutes was in your packet. If we can get a motion in a second.
So moved, second.
All right, who did we have? Mike, Mike and then Derek, okay? Uh, any comments, any changes, anybody see anything? Okay? Always all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we got that taken care of. Uh, public appearances, public comment, this part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the Village Board, including items both on and off the agenda. So, uh, there's a couple exciting things tonight, so I asked Steve, um... Hand her hand, is that, am I saying that right, Steve, am I close?
No.
From Habitat, Steve is gonna share some good news with us.
This is on? Yes. Good evening, thanks for allowing me a couple minutes here. Um, Elise, I'm not trying to steal your thunder at all here.
Go ahead.
Just the Department of Administration granted the, um, award that we applied for jointly, um, a couple days ago. Fantastic news. But more importantly, it's an example of how we as Habitat really wanna work with communities like this going forward. It's really refreshing to see all the support. I've been, um, in front of a lot of you a couple of times. Martin, I know you're kinda new, but Elise has been really helpful, so has Jeff. This is a great place for Habitat. And it's a really good example of the collaboration between the Village, Verbecker, who did a great job putting all that stuff together, Habitat and the Board. Um, I can't thank you enough. Um, we're gonna have some informational meetings starting in January, then there'll be some more in the next quarter. We will soon have names of people that you can identify with the Habitat homes that we're gonna be putting in. That's when it gets really exciting. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to say thanks. And we've got a lot of more details to go through and I did dot and teased across, but with the help of your staff, we'll get through that. And hopefully we'll be digging some holes in the ground before the end of our fiscal year, which is June 30th, and get things rolling for the next year.
So Steve, just let me sort of, um, say the grant was for $631,200, so that's, that's fantastic.
And then you have to also remember that you guys from your hosing.
Correct.
Also are helping. So it's, it's just phenomenal for us, just great stuff.
Yeah. And I, and I'll just sort of add, I mean, I, I've done grants before and I know that, I know our staff, and maybe Martin can address, and Elise, that our staff has, did a lot of work to get this happening too, and maybe Elise you wanna say. So, so we're very grateful to our staff, cuz it's, it's no small feat.
Yeah, definitely a lot of hurting. The other person that deserves some credit is our wonderful clerk Candy Jones.
Yes.
Who worked really closely with Verbecker and tried to get all those documents and signatures together, so we appreciate all the work that Candy did to help, but.
Absolutely.
Yeah, these CDBG federal grants, they certainly make you work for them. But I'm glad that we were able to get that secured, and I know we're happy to support the project and look forward to working with you on more projects in the future.
Yeah, so, so good news for the Village, also good news for Habitat, so.
Fantastic.
A win-win for both of us. So Steve, thanks for coming in last minute, I know I just invited you last night, but appreciate you coming to sort of announce it.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah, same to you. Okay, that, that'll be the first one, there's a couple more coming up here. So, um, we're onto five, which is proclamations and announcements, and we have in our packet the upcoming meetings and events to get in our calendars. Uh, 5B is another award that, uh, that Jeff Rao and I have done, it's an urban forestry grant. We wrote it for more trees for 2022. Um, you know, we put in, we had some money in the budget last time, we did some good terrace trees and some park trees, and we, we wanna continue, and Jeff and I wrote this one, and we just got a, an award for that, so, so another good, good thing for the Village, and we'll, we'll look for more.
Absolutely.
Yeah, more stuff. So Jeff, you wanna say anything?
No, I think.
Okay.
It's great.
Yeah. All right, all right, so we're on to six, report of Village Officers. Uh, Martin has his very detailed report, anybody's got any questions for, for Martin? That was in our packet?
Just one thing I wanted.
Yeah, sure.
To highlight, um, the Janu-, the first January meeting, if everybody is okay with having it on January 10th to the 3rd, that's, that's what we're planning on.
Okay.
May I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
Um, cuz, uh, my mom is having surgery January 4th, and I'll be in Illinois for a couple of weeks taking care of her. Do I have to do anything or get approval, like, can I call in to participate in, in the meeting? Are, are trustees okay with that? I don't know how.
Matt?
I think we can find a way to make that work. I'm not sure that you would be counted for quorum purposes, just because of the current rules that we operate under. Um, as you know, we've been talking about whether to facilitate a hybrid meeting, but we haven't actually gotten there yet. So I think we'd be in a position to have you, like, appear by phone, I'm not sure from a technology standpoint what all the options are there. Uh, I just don't know that you'd be allowed to, that we would be able to count you in for quorum purposes. Whether you'd be allowed to vote or not is something we'd have to look at.
Okay.
Because we're operating under old, we're operating under the rules that have been in place for many years.
Sure.
Which require, uh, um, you to be present in person. We did suspend those on an emergency basis, as you know, during the pandemic, but I think we're back to those rules now, and until we modify them, um, you know, at, at Robert's rules at least, requires in-person for quorum purposes.
Yeah.
And maybe for voting, we'll have to check on that.
We could have you call in though, I mean, you could at least listen.
Yeah, well, I could watch the live stream then too, so.
That's true.
Yeah. Okay, all right, well, at least you all know why I won't be here.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so, uh, 6B is Chief Police, Chief Benkov is not here, but her report was, uh, in our packet. I think if anybody's, has any questions, we can, we can have her address them at the next meeting, if that, if that's okay. 6C is report of J.C. Park West Redevelopment Project, and there is a report in our packet. Martin, I don't know, does anybody wanna, who wants to give a little update on this?
Yeah, I can give a little update. We wanted to get this in front of you all, just to make you aware of it, cuz it'll come at the next meeting on January 10th for potential action. As you know, we're, we've been working on the J.C. Park West project. We recently met with Rettler, who are the engineers on the project, and they put together some revised cost estimates for the project. Of course, if you've looked at the packet, you can see that prices for things have gone up quite a bit. Uh, I believe this one was a 20% increase, just due to some of the inflationary stuff that they're seeing, plus just what they're seeing in some of the recent bids that they've done. So after talking with them about it, uh, staff proposed a phased approach to the project. And so you can see it up on the screen there, phase one and phase two. We went with taking out the northeast corner of the project, so that we would have a, just a whole swath of area that we could come back later and do without disturbing the first phase. Uh, and so we brought this to Park Board last week and, um, talked with them about it, they eventually recommended approval of it, but they do wanna see, um, for example, the pickleball be put in as an alternate to be bid as well, just to see where some of the prices come back on those phase two components. So if they do come over, um, we can obviously leave them out, um, but if they are under, we can potentially maybe put them back in for the full project. Uh, so this will be going to Plan Commission, just for, uh, site plan review and compliance against the Village zoning, but then it'll come to the Village Board for, uh, final review and potential authorization to bid the project. Uh, but we wanted to make you all aware of kind of the phasing changes and to think about that ahead of the January 10th meeting.
Okay. Anybody questions or comments for Martin on this one? Welcome, Carlene.
Thank you, sorry it's late.
Anybody, okay, so January 10th, we'll expect it back.
Yep.
Okay, Martin, thank you. All right, moving along, we will go to 6D, which is Director, Director Public Works Report on South Main Street Sewer Backup and the 2022 Alliant Energy Rates. Jeff did a nice, uh, little memo in our packet in an email. Jeff, I don't know if you wanna say anything?
Just if there's any questions.
Yeah, anybody have any questions? Looks like an 8% increase.
Well, our, well, the sewer backup definitely will be coming back with you, eventually you'll unlike, or likely see a claim or two come through on that. Um, that'll be probably sometime January, February, uh, past the first of the year.
Okay.
And then the Alliant Energy, uh, a little concerning, but I guess it's kind of par for what we've been seeing in a lot of other places and everything, so, um, 8% added for 2022, um, that's not in our budget numbers right now, but, uh, I mean, we did add some, but I don't believe, I know it wasn't anywhere near 8%, so, um, our, our monthly billing for, um, Alliant Energy is in excess of $20,000, so it does add up after a while.
Okay. Any questions or anything for Jeff on that? Okay. All right, 6E is Village Department Head Staff and Consultant Comments, and Jennifer, I think Jennifer's got another announcement for us.
Yeah, I just wanna share that we just heard that we got a $40,000 grant from the Madison Community Foundation, um, and it's wonderful because we were one of just 23 organizations selected, they don't, I think 80 organizations apply, so it's quite an honor to be selected amongst those that they funded. Special thanks to Randy, um, and Jenny Nelson, who helped with the application process. We actually started applying with them in 2019, we started talking to them right before their grant deadline, and they said, "We recommend you wait to apply till next year." While the next year there was a pandemic, and they did not have their grant cycle, so we had to wait until this year, um, got invited back, and we're fortunate to be selected, so we feel very, very lucky, um, to be selected and, and, um, to be able to have that funding to put towards our project.
And Jennifer, I was just thinking about that, it seems ages ago that you and I met with Downtown Madison with one of the VPs of the Community Foundation, but I, I'm glad it, it worked out for us, so, thank you. Anybody, yeah?
Just a question, are those funds earmarked for anything in particular?
Yeah, and they're specifically for the new building, um, so they're, they'll have their name on a, one of the study rooms, um, because of the dollar amount they contributed.
Okay, thanks.
And I should say too, this is, this, uh, Community Foundation is a very competitive, you have to do a pre-application and then get selected to sort of move on, so to, to get an award, as Jennifer mentioned, it's, it's a big deal, it's a, it's a very competitive grant operation.
And just a compliment to the Oregon Brooklyn Optimists who shared their, um, they were successfully got a grant awarded in 2019, so they were kind enough to share their, um, grant application with us as an example, as did, um, Randy for the 10-man application that the Village had previously, so those were hugely helpful in us, um, making our application as successful as possible.
Yeah, good, good for, good for everybody, another good one. Um, so 6F, we can move on to Village Board Comments, if anybody's got anything? Good? Okay, we're moving along, good. Seven, Communication Miscellaneous Business. Uh, 7A is Library Board Minutes for November 10th. It was information only, was in our, in our, um, packet. Anybody's got any questions or, otherwise we'll move on. 7B is Approval of Vouchers, uh, we're looking at, uh, 362,912 and 33. If I can get a motion in a second, we'll get that on the floor, and then we'll, so Amanda and Jerry? All right, questions from anybody? All right, Jerry, go ahead.
Yeah, I think this is probably a question for Lisa. Number 8905, it's Village of Oregon, a real estate tax payer.
Yeah, that's the, um, the taxes for the new, um, OCB building that we purchased?
Oh, for a partial year?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, when we had our closing.
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, the bank, um.
It was, yeah, I.
Paid their portion of the allocation and then we picked up the rest.
Right.
Which is being covered by the rent that we've been collecting?
Yeah, they paid their partial year during closing.
Correct.
And now it's just a matter of us giving it to, uh, to the Village, so. Okay, um, number, uh, 12,582X on, um, it's a P, let's see what it is. Uh, it's for, uh, camera storage for the PD. Is that, well, I don't know if, the chief isn't here, I don't know if anybody will know this, but, know the answer to this, but the, uh, is that for a whole year, a partial year, or what is that for?
Let me, let me look at the invoice.
I know we have to store the video that comes in through us.
It looks like it was for additional body, uh, body camera storage.
It's $12,000.
Right, yeah, I have the invoice here, I'm just trying to figure out. It must be the annual, cuz it talks about licensing.
Licensing fee?
Um, yeah.
Okay.
Um, okay, license year four. It must be annual because it says year four payment.
So it's an annual license fee?
Well, there's a whole bunch of different, there's about, mm, 10 different things listed on here. There's, um, evidence room storage, there's evidence, um, license, tech assurance, plan doc, a couple of, there's three of those. It must be for, like, um, I wonder if it's for the, um, maybe, like, what's in the squads too, that it feeds into, I don't know a lot about.
So, so Lisa, we, we can get, we can get clarification from the chief, maybe that's the way to do it. Jerry, if that's okay, and then we'll.
That's fine with me.
We'll get you an answer.
No, I mean, I'm good with that.
Yeah, okay.
And then my last, uh, one that I'd like to ask about is, uh, number 12,582, uh, Supreme Structures, for a bike and brews surcharge expense, $55,000.
That was, yeah, that was approved by the Board, um, a while ago.
Tip payment, right?
Pardon?
Tip payment? Yes.
Is that a tip payment?
Yeah, it's part of their TIP incentive payment.
Okay, then I'm, I'm good.
They requested two, and this is the first one to get the surcharging done.
Okay, I wasn't sure exactly what, I knew.
Yeah.
It was surcharge, I knew we approved it, but I wasn't sure, I guess I, my memory isn't that good, so.
That's okay.
I asked about it, and that answered the question, thank you.
All right, Jerry, that's it?
That's it.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote, voice vote. Candy?
Philo?
Yes.
Glush?
Yes.
Beshin?
Yes.
Stitch?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Watch?
Yes.
And Peterson?
Yes.
All right, excellent. All right, 7C, nomination of Matthew Pughda to, to fill the Plan Commission Alternate Member vacancy for the unexpired term, uh, ending April 30th, 2022. We'll take a motion in a second to approve that. Amanda and Luke, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. 7D is nomination of Judy Knutson to fill the Park Board, uh, Member Vacancy for, uh, unexpired term ending, uh, April 30th, 2023. Take a motion in a second on that one. All right, we got Luke and Amanda, okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And then we're on to seven, 7E and F, I would say Jeff are a little, sort of, a couple cleanups that, from some previous, but we have to suspend the rules for both, let's take E first, which is, um, ordinance number 2123, ordinance amending, uh, section 7.04, the Code of Ordinances for the Village of Oregon Relates Speed Limit on Lincoln, Lincoln Road. Staff recommendation is to suspend the rules and waive the first, and then approve the motion, so, um, Jeff, help me with this, we, we approved this long.
Yeah, this was.
Quite a while, quite a while ago.
Well, yes, you, you approved this back in March.
Yes.
Like 15th, 2021, um, and it's just been on my desk, it was on our.
Yeah.
Chris's desk, it was, you know.
Little, little cleanup, that's all we're doing.
Yep, exactly, we're just cleaning this up.
End of the year cleanup. So we need a, we need a motion in a second, so, to suspend the rules, I see Derek and Mike, okay, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
And then we opposed, and then we need a, a motion to approve the ordinance. Amanda and Derek, any discussion on that? Otherwise, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And then we'll go to F is similar, F, 7F is ordinance 2122, ordinance amending section 7.02 of the Code of, um, Ordinances for the Village of Oregon related, no park, no parking zones on North Burr Oak Avenue. Staff recommendation is to suspend and approve the ordinance. Again, we've seen this one before, so I'll take a motion in a second to suspend the rules. All right, Carlene, I got?
It's up to you.
And Derek, okay? All, uh, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, let's then have a motion in a second to approve the ordinance, I see Mikes and Derek. Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay?
Thank you.
Yep, moving along, 7G is requested to declare old and unusable water meters as surplus for disposal. All right, Amanda and Derek, any discussion on this one?
Yeah, Randy, you have to read all of the numbers.
Oh, please, I saw the numbers, they're huge.
If you wouldn't mind reading, starting over.
Well, yeah. That's all right. From, from one to the end, how's that? Is that good enough? All right, so.
This is just cleanup every year, we do this.
Yeah.
At the, at the last meeting.
So we got a motion in a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay?
Thank you.
Uh, we're on to H, Resolution 2155, according elected officials for the 2022, 2023 term, don't, don't make me read all these names, there's a lot of them. So I'll take a motion in a second, so we can get these approved, get ready. I'll take Carlene and Derek. Any discussion on this?
I just had a quick question for Candy, if that's right.
Yeah.
Candy, is there an online sign up for, um, becoming a full worker, uh, on, on the Village website? And I guess my other question would be, do we send out a announcement when those training courses are coming?
We will, we will do both, and there is an election training section on our website where they can contact us to, if they're interested. And also, we're, we're still working, we think we're going to do training in January, but if there's no primary, we might move it a little bit, just so it's before an elec, like, a couple of weeks before an election. So there is training, we'll send it out e-notify, we send it out Facebook, you, all right.
Thank you.
Another, another quick question for Candy.
Yeah, Carlene, go ahead.
Um, currently, I know there's some, still some time left, but currently, does it look like there will be any primaries?
Well, I don't wanna, I don't wanna talk about it, because then I'll not.
No. Okay.
As of right now, there is no statewide, um, offices that will be up for primaries.
Okay.
So it depends on, I haven't heard anything from the school board, I did reach out last week, but I'm sure they're busy too, so, I didn't hear anything from them, but as of, like, the Village local, not at this time.
And then along the lines of elections, I know that when people declare for municipal kinds of elections, they have to be posted, but how about for school board? Do those have to be posted somewhere, or is that something the school district does?
Yep, the school district posts as well. They have the same posting requirements we do for municipal election.
Great, thank you.
All right, yeah, Amanda.
Yeah, I just wanna be clear on how this works, and, uh, because my name's on this list, and I will be on the ballot for April at least, but for the record, I go through the training so that I can hope in the fall, I will not be working on any elections where I am on the ballot that's per state law, so, just wanna say that out loud, so people know.
Good, good clarification, good. Anybody else? We got a motion in a second? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Moving along, we're on to I, which is Employee Assistance Agreement between Family Services of Madison and Village of Oregon for Employee Assistance Program. I'm assuming, Martin, this is our, our yearly contract.
Yep, that's correct.
For that. All right, I'll take a motion in a second, Derek I see, and Carlene, any discussion on this one? Okay? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Perfect.
J, Village Attorney's Memo Regarding Nationwide Opioid Settlement Agreements, and Matt, I'm gonna turn it over to you, sir.
Okay. Um, so, actually, one of my colleagues, Jane Landretti, has, has really done most of the work on this, but she has briefed me on it, and I've reviewed her memo, so I think I can give you enough direction tonight, so you'll know kind of what this is about. So you may have heard of, uh, some national litigation, um, it's called multi-district litigation, uh, involving the opioid, um, crisis that we've been dealing with. And the, the issue before you tonight involves, um, some specific, uh, litigation, and there's a settlement pending, um, court has not yet approved the settlement, but it's, um, pending approval of the court. And the time-sensitive issue for the Village is whether the Village wishes to opt in to these, uh, the litigation. And, so let me try and explain what that does and doesn't mean. But to do that, I have to take a little detour and talk about what the Wisconsin Legislature did. The Legislature in Wisconsin, um, adopted, um, a piece of legislation that says a couple of things about that litigation. One, it says that, um, if that settlement is approved, the proceeds would be allocated between the state and counties. Um, and it, unless you are a municipality that had actually joined that litigation prior to a certain date, you have no opportunity to share directly in the proceeds of that settlement. And because the Village, that puts the Village of Oregon in a position where even if you were to opt in, and the settlement were approved, you would not be eligible to receive funding directly from that because of the action taken by the State of Wisconsin, okay? So why would you opt in? According to my colleague Jane, the, the practical significance of opting in would be to join in the chorus of other local governments that have expressed support for the settlement. As I understand it, unless there's a sufficient showing of support nationally for this settlement, or, or that will help, uh, the court, uh, maybe decide that approving the settlement is, uh, what it ought to do. So, um, opting in will not make the Village eligible for funds, even if the settlement is approved, but will lend your voice, uh, will lend a voice of support to the settlement, shall we say. So that's part one of the discussion. The other thing I can say then is, um, does that mean you won't have an opportunity for funding? No, there's still, there's still, uh, an opportunity for the Village to participate in, in, in opioid mitigation strategies, if you wish, but, um, but the way that the funding is gonna have to be spent is going to be constrained. It, it will, the money is gonna have to be spent on programs that are designed to mitigate the opioid crisis. And so my understanding is that if the Village, you could sit back and just allow the state and the county to develop and administer those kinds of programs. If there's something that the Village believes it is in a better position to do locally than, than could be done at the state or county level, then you can go to the county and say, "We'd like to reach an agreement with the county, um, on the, an allocation of funding we'd like to reach an agreement with the county, um, on the allocation of funding to the village to support a local program, if there is a program that you'd like to pursue here locally. So that's still something you could pursue with the county, as I understand it, um, but you won't really be in a position to do that until the settlement is approved, we have more information about how the money can be used, and we have some more clarity about what the county's plans are, so that is, uh, the reason this is on the agenda now, though, is that, um, this deadline for you to opt in is like January second, or something like that, I think, and, and so if you, if, if you, I think it was a resolution that was included in the packet?
Yes.
No, no, well, you can vote, do it by motion, if the board by motion directs me to take the steps necessary for the village to opt in, then I'll have Jane in my office, um, get online and, and work through that process, as I understand it, she, she knows how to do it, and, and you can opt in, a couple questions I've been asked, is there any downside to opting in, not that I know of, uh, it doesn't look like that means you're automatically signing up to, you know, to spend a bunch of time and effort in the case, it just means you've demonstrated support for it. Is there any real upside to it, not beyond what I've already described, I think, so that's about what, that's all I know, if we need more information than that, I'm gonna have to.
So, so Matt, just a question that I had, so i- if we, if we don't opt in, then we would not be eligible, if we, if we opted in, the money would go to Dane County?
Whether, whether you opt in or not, if you do nothing, the money's gonna go to the state and to Dane County, it's like a seventy-thirty split.
So, my next question is, if we don't opt in, are, are we still able to, at some point down, go to Dane County and say we?
Yes.
It doesn't hurt us, if we don't opt in?
If you don't opt in, I, I'm not aware of any negative consequence to you for not opting in.
Okay.
Um, other than you didn't have the opportunity to jump on the bandwagon and say, we support this settlement, we wanna, we wanna push this, we wanna be part of the, the group of communities nationally that are pushing the court to approve this.
Okay, all right, who else?
Yeah, Carleen.
I'm assuming then this is different than the Sacker settlement.
The Stappler?
Stat.
The bankruptcy?
Yeah, that one that's been put on hold by a judge who said that's not, it's not, this is a different case, okay? And then my, um, I guess my general sentiment is if, this is something that supports something that we know is a good thing, I personally would love to see us go on the record as supporting it, because I think it is a good thing, and, you know, who knows if it helps our chances of getting money later on, but there's, if there's no downside, I, I would say that it sounds like something that we should, should support.
Okay, Mike?
Yeah, how, how much effort is it to opt in?
I'm sorry?
How much effort is it to opt in?
Well, again, as I understand it, uh, it will take my colleague, uh, you know, maybe twenty minutes to get online, plug in a number that corresponds to the Village of Oregon, fill out some information, and, and you're in, and that's, that's what she's, that's my understanding, so, not a big effort.
Yeah, Jerry.
So can I assume then it's not a big cost?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, Amanda.
Yeah, um, I, I had a conversation too about, with Cynthia DiCamelli, who's part of Oregon Cares, and, um, to see if there would be value in, in, you know, one way or the other to them, and, um, they get a certain amount of munding for opioid abatement, uh, every year, like, seven, seven or eight thousand dollars, she said, from public health, and the police department gets some money, I, I understand, through a grant program also for disposal of opioids and things they collect, um, and she didn't particularly see a need for any funding necessarily through this, but if we, if we as a village came up with a need for it, we could apply for it later, so, just to.
Yeah, Matt.
And, uh, one of, another community asked me, they have an organization like Oregon Cares locally, and asked, would they be eligible for funding, and, and my answer was, I don't know, but, um, I, I assume they would be able to go to Dane County if, and, and say, hey, we can be helpful in pursuing these mitigation strategies and, and create an opportunity for funding, but my, my hope is they could do that just independently, and they wouldn't need the village to be a conduit, 'cause it would be simpler if we don't have to have multi, you know, have all these different parties negotiating contracts and so on.
Okay, I mean, it seems, it seems like there's no downside in us opting in, I mean, we're, we're supporting the, the clause, well, the clause sort of in a way, the, what they're trying to do with it, so, um, I, I mean, I, I personally don't have any problem with us opting in, something might come, who knows, but I mean, just to, just to say, yeah, we support what this is trying to do, for me, is okay, I don't know how others, others feel, but, so Matt, you're looking for a, you wanna a, a motion?
A motion, if you'd like, uh, if you'd like us to take the steps to opt the village in, I need a motion directing that, if not, that's fine too.
What do, what do we think, yeah, Luke?
I just, so right now, we're just asking to opt in or opt out, but there's a, but your last paragraph is, we need to determine whether we wish to develop our own abatement programs, or leave that to the state?
That's if you want money, if you wanna go to the county and, and ask the county to allocate funding to the village, then I think we're gonna need to, to have a program that we can take to them and say, hey, we're gonna use it on a program that, that is eligible for funding, it's an opioid abatement or mitigation program of some kind, but I don't, that's not the issue before you tonight.
It, it sounds like even if that is the case down the road, that Oregon Cares and the police department might have some things that we could augment, use funds to augment, not have to start something new, that's what I'm hearing you say, Matt.
I think that's right, yeah, those are two obvious potential, um, players who, who would be able to say, we, we have a role to play here in responding to this.
Okay, anybody else? So I guess the thing is before us, do we, do we wanna say, yeah, we support what, what is happening, basically, Matt, is what we're, what we're gonna?
I think that's the effectiveness of the, of opting in, is to say, we support the settlement of this litigation, and we're, we're going to opt in and, and show support for, for that.
Okay, all right, anybody, yeah, Luke, did you have a question, or anybody? All right, go ahead, Luke, sure, opt in from Luke, second, I'll take, I saw Mike's hand, all right, so we got a motion in a second to opt in and support, um, support this, uh, any other discussion? Well, let, all in favor, well, let, we got a motion in a second, let's just vote on it, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, okay, all right, Matt, we're good. All right, we're on to K, seven K, resolution twenty-one fifty-six, adopting twenty-twenty-two fee schedule. Recommend motion is to approve as presented, um, so on the packet, it looked like there's two things, Candy, one is the removal of the rental charges for the community rooms, since we'll be moving over to the Alpine, and the second one is the update the charge for the refuge and recycling charge, I assume that, is that, that's going up, I assume? Candy?
Yep, from twelve and a quarter to twelve fifty-five.
Okay, all right, uh, so, we're looking for a motion in a second, if Amanda's and Carleen, okay? Any other discussion on this, all right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, okay? Uh, seven, seven L, engagement, engagement letter with Johnson Block Company for our audit, typically, I think, Lisa, we do these, we could do them every year, right, yeah, so this is basically for another year's worth of audits, uh, for services for the year ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-one, so, kind of a standard audit. Motion in a second, anybody, Amanda and Derek, any questions, any discussion, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, okay? All right, moving along, eight, reports of committees, we have none, nine unfinished business, items are for discussion, possible action, nine A is review of chapter one and two of the village code, including the potential creation of the sustainability committee, public transportation committee, and other governance considerations, Martin, you wanna?
Sure. Take her over? Uh, so, earlier this year, when we did our strategic plan, um, one of the goals was to address chapters one and two of the village code, and that kinda tied into a bunch of different things that we also talked about, which was creation of a couple of committees, um, some different things like, uh, how do we wanna use committee, the standing committee structure, we've talked a little bit about the hybrid virtual meeting rules, um, and so, I handed the two chapters out back in October or September, and, uh, kind of, uh, asked to, to all of you to review that, and then to, that we would come back at a future meeting and, and talk about any changes or ideas that, um, all of you may have for, for these two chapters, so, in my memo, um, I identified a couple of things that have come up, uh, over the last few months, uh, including the standing committee structure, term limits, um, establishment of meeting times, timing of packet publishing, the virtual meeting rules, creation of a couple of committees, um, so, I'd love to get feedback from the board on how we wanna move forward with those things, um, as far as the, the two chapters beyond these policy things that have been brought up already, um, there's certainly a, a number of different administrative or, uh, legal things that just need to be kinda cleaned up throughout these, uh, chapters, um, so for example, you know, section one point zero two says that the senior center director is appointed for a one-year term, I doubt that's ever happened, I'm sure Rachel has been in her position, uh, same with, uh, the library director, says it's only appointed for a one-year term, but you assume you haven't been appointed for successive one-year terms?
That's correct.
Yeah, so, there's just some things that need to be cleaned up, and, and myself, and, and Matt, and Candy, and, and others can, can certainly comb through this and clean some of those things up, um, but as far as different changes and, and policy changes that we've talked about, that's kinda what we wanna hear back from, from all of you on.
Okay, so, can I just, uh, maybe just start, I, I know I've met with both Amanda and Mike, and Mike is kinda heading up the sustainability and is, um, providing a nice outline of kinda what the committee, and, and Amanda's done the same thing, are we, I, I think both of you are, are comfortable with what we have, I'm just wondering if the board is ready to, I mean, Martin, are you looking for potentially some motions to move forward, or not, or you just want discussion?
I think if, for example, for the two committees, you know, there's two drafts that have been prepared, um, if the board wants to move ahead and start dealing with those committees, um, we can put that into our ordinance format and come back at the next meeting and approve those, and start moving those along, and then we can do the rest of the chapter one and two as separate ordinances, or all in one ordinance, however the board wants to, to do it.
So I, I thought those were maybe the easiest two to start with, I don't know, let's, let's see what, how others are feeling about, about the sustainability and the transportation, are we ready to sort of move, you got, yeah, so, some feedback, I guess. Mike, you wanna start, you wanna say anything, or?
Uh, I'm certainly ready to move ahead, I have no problem with either of them, but I'm curious what other people think, and if they want changes to them, or?
Yeah, they were both sort of in our packets, anybody have any comments, see things that they, they'd like to see changed, or are, are we comfortable with what's been presented? Yeah, Derek?
I'm just gonna throw my usual, I mean, all four term limits on any of these, again, uh, similar to what we did on the diversity, equity, inclusion, roughly about ten years' worth of terms, a year off, and then if you wanna re, reapply, again, that, I'm gonna be bringing that up for most of chapters one and two, so.
Okay, yeah, Mike?
Yeah, um, I think whatever we do with term limits, we should do across our committees, uh, so maybe just have one discussion on term limits for all of it, and.
I totally agree, Mike.
Okay. All right, who else?
So we're just discussing the sustainability?
Yeah, I thought, I thought we just, 'cause there's a couple of things, those might be the, I thought maybe would be the easiest to start with.
So, one of the things that occurs to me is that the committees, this is all about the structure of, of the committees, and one of the things that, you know, I come from the nonprofit and then the education world, where you kinda have a mission defined, and I, I feel like the, the overall goal of the committees is missing.
Okay.
Does that make sense? I mean, this is, this is a lot of structural information, which is great, but that, that next piece, which for me is fairly apparent to what I think in their titles, is not necessarily, I, I feel like it, it needs to be spelled out, especially if, if we're gonna ask people to apply, they need to know what the mission of the committee is, does that make sense?
Mm-hmm, Amanda, you, you.
Yeah, I don't, I, um, I totally get why you wanna know, I think, um, for committees, the powers and duties kind of refers more to the scope, because you wanna be intentionally a little bit vague to allow them to work on general things, like for transportation, um, you know, I don't wanna necessarily limit it to just, just public transportation, like, that may be how we start, and then we wanna bring public transportation to Oregon, but, you know, in, down the road, once we've worked on that, we've gotten that, it may turn into, well, let's look at, um, you know, fixing our sidewalks program, 'cause that's transportation too, you know, people walk around the village, and, so, but if you narrow it too much, that can be bad too.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree, it just seems like it's boiled down to one sentence, it's really vague in each of them.
Yeah, Derek, go ahead.
I'm in, uh, I'm gonna take you back on what Amanda's saying, I almost feel like that these committees should be coming up with their miss, mission statement at their organizational meeting, what do they wanna accomplish during these terms, and kinda set that agenda going forward, I mean, everyone kinda understands what the public transportation, sustainability, diversity, equity, and inclusion refer to, and I think that those people that are appointed to that committee should have some say as to what direction they wanna take during their term.
I'm not suggesting that we define exactly what it is, that's not what I'm saying at all, what I'm saying is my interpretation of some words and other people's interpretation of those same words can be very different, and I would just like a little more definition for people who are applying for what it is that, that the goal of, of what the, the committee's work would be, that's all.
Maybe Matt's got some, some words of wisdom here.
Well, I'll, uh, I'll just share a couple thoughts, 'cause I've, uh, I, I do have some, some thoughts on this, so, um, when I think about committees, I really think of two different kinds of committees, a standing committee is a committee that, um, is created not with a specific directive from the board, do this and come back with a recommendation on this, but with the knowledge that it has kind of oversight over, so, over a set of issues that are recurring in the village, so the finance committee, or the public works committee, those are committees that you can anticipate, um, uh, will, will receive and, and, and report back to the board in an advisory capacity on routine matters that fall kind of within their, their worlds, right, so that's one kind of committee, um, and, and I, generally speaking, I think it is a good idea to have clarity as to what the kind of scope of that committee's jurisdiction would be, so to speak, uh, because then, you know, we as staff people know where to send things when, when they come up, um, the other kind of committee that, uh, is a committee that the board creates with a specific directive from the board, um, that we need you to study this issue for us and come back, uh, with recommendations, um, and so, I, I think it's helpful to think in those terms, when you're talking about creating a committee, is this something that you intend to be like a standing committee, or? And, but those are typically village board rep members only, that come back and, and report to the board, so then there's this third kind of thing out there, boards and commissions, so what do we, we've got a library board, and a plan commission, are the, uh, are the two biggies, right, well, those are statutorily required bodies that have been designed very carefully to, um, create political independence from the village board, when it comes in one case to managing the library, and in another case, when it comes to making planning recommendations, okay? So, when you think about the different models that are out there, we've got, okay, statutory boards and commissions, boards and commissions that are very purposefully designed, they have a mission, a defined scope, and they're designed to function somewhat independently of you all in, in carrying out their defined mission. And you've got standing committees, board committees that are by design there to serve in an advisory capacity to you and the membership typically is just you people. Sometimes communities will say, well, we want some non-trustees to be on those committees as well, and you can do that, but then it's helpful to know what their mission is. And again, I think you should set their, their mission. I don't think you should say to them, and by the way, whatever else you guys want to do is fine with us. No, I think, I think you should set their mission. And then the other kind is, from my perspective, if there's a specific area where you're saying as a board, we need a group to study a particular issue and to develop recommendations and then bring them back to us, that's like sometimes called like an ad hoc committee or something like that, then that's the other kind of model. And so, as I think about this issue, those are the different buckets that I think of and I, I, and I, and I wouldn't, I would be concerned about saying, well, we're just, we're going to create this body and say, you guys go figure out what you want to do and then come back and let us know, because that doesn't make any sense to me. I mean, these are, you guys, if, if you see a need for them, then you should figure, you know, why are you creating them? You, you need to give them a mission. I don't, I don't think, now, you could, you could create a mission that gives them some latitude to decide, you know, how to put the meat on the bone, so to say. You could say, well, we need your help figuring out even maybe what the scope of this is, but you've got to give them something to work with as a mission, I think.
Okay. So, so Mike and Amanda, I mean, does that, is it something that you can understand? Do you want to, you want to go back and do a little bit more? Mike, do you want to do a little bit more tweaking of this or what are you thinking? These are, you guys are sort of taking the lead on this.
Personally, I don't. This was kind of by design. I mean, you and I and Martin went back and forth over this and, and some of us wanted more detail and some of us wanted less detail.
Yeah.
The rationale that I had for this was I wanted a committee whose goal was to reduce Oregon's impact on the environment, to prepare for climate change, to basically have a way of measuring it and coming back with report cards to the board on the progress we've made and, and have a direction. What I didn't want to do was start talking about, oh, we need to protect wetlands and we need to convert the village to clean energy and we needed to get to electronic vehicles for the village and all of that sort of thing, all of which have value, but I didn't want to be prescriptive. I really wanted the committee to have ability to look at all of this so that when it actually presents to the board, it can make recommendations based on a value that, okay, we can order our priorities in terms of the effect that they will have and also in terms of the cost of the village. And they may come up with things. I, I've been active on climate issue or environmental issues for a long time, and I don't think of myself as an expert and across all the boards, I don't want it, or all the issues, I don't want to predetermine what the answers for the committee are. And that's why I wrote it this way.
My, what I'm saying about mission is, is not a prescriptive thing at all. It's a description, and perhaps it's just a word usage that I'm more accustomed to in the roles that I've had before, that is, again, this is an interpretation of words that I just want to make sure people are clear on what it is that the, the, the overall goal, mission for the committee would be. So, it could, could be that the function and duty are the mission, you know, that's, and that's again, just a difference in wording that I'm not accustomed to.
So, I think when I was talking with Mike and Amanda on these, so the idea, I think, here, and you guys can back me up or say differently, is we value environmental sustainability, we value public transportation, but we don't know how to advance those priorities because we don't know what's best for the village of Oregon, because we haven't studied it. We haven't talked to people in the community, we haven't engaged with experts, we haven't applied those two concepts to what it means to the village of Oregon. And so, I think what both of these were trying to do is to say that we need to do that and we want a committee to do that. And both of these, and maybe there's some word tweaking that could, could occur here, but both of these, under their powers and duties, mention that it shall be the function of these committees to make a plan, identifying those things, policies, programs, goals, objectives, strategies, metrics, and then provide that to the village board. And maybe there's some tightening up of some of that language that needs to occur, but I think that's what you guys were trying, are trying to achieve here, is we want to advance this, but we don't know how, make a plan, study it, bring it back to us, we'll review it.
So, can I just say, respond to what you just said? I think what you just said at the beginning there, these are things that we as a village value and we need some input on how to move forward on them, defines what the mission of these committees is. It, it's identifying that this is something that we value and that we want to do something about it and therefore are creating these.
Just a big difference, though, just between two different kinds of committees. One would be if the goal is to say, give this group the assignment of studying and coming back with a recommendation, and they do that and they give a report, and then they're done, they go away. That's one kind of committee. Another kind of committee is to say, oh, no, they're going to be here forever, and guess what? Anytime we do anything, they have to look at it, and then they have to give us their input on what we're doing before we vote, because we want them to look at every single thing we vote on through the lens of sustainability, however you define it. So, which kind of body are you creating, is what I'm asking? Is it, do you want, do you want to say, we are asking, we're charging you to study this and come back and report to us, and then when we've accepted your report, you're discharged and you're done? Or do you want to say, no? Just like we're going to send things to the public works committee before we vote on it, or the finance committee when appropriate, we're going to want these people to weigh in on certain things, every time, forever, because that's their mission. It's a different kind of committee, depending on what you, how you choose to create it and what, what you, what you think its mission should be. Is it, is it a defined, finite mission and when they're done, they're done? Or no, you want a group of people that's going to weigh in on every, on certain things forever or until they're disbanded, because you don't find it useful anymore? You see the difference?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, when it comes to the transportation committee, I thought about this, you know, I thought, well, you know, do we just want this committee to bring public transportation to Oregon and that's its goal and we make reports, we survey the community, and we figure out how to do that, and once a company comes to down, we're done? I, I did see value in keeping it going forward when other issues come up, you know, you know, looking at ongoing funding sources and, and maybe we need more than one type. I mean, it's not just going to be necessarily some kind of cab service or something, but maybe we need electric bikes in town or, you know, might be multiple types of transportation and all of a sudden, you know, it was, it was getting bigger and I thought, well, we could make it a standing committee until we deem that we don't need it anymore, but I honestly felt like we would find things, you know, that we would want this committee to work on beyond the initial bringing public transportation to Oregon. So, and plus I saw the ad hoc committees, from what I understand by definition are one-year ad hoc.
No, until they're done.
Just till they're done.
However long it takes them to do their work and come back and report.
Because I kind of figured the, the initial figuring out what we need and getting something here would take about two years at least, you know, and so...
Until you're, until they're done, unless you by design say, by the way, we're only giving you a year, and if you're not done, then you're done. You can make that choice.
Okay. So, anyway, that was the thought, my thought process. I, I see this as a useful committee going into the future. So, if you guys think otherwise, you know, weigh in, but...
Mike?
Yeah, I saw this also as being useful going into the future. I mean, to me, coming up with a plan on the environment and not paying any attention on how to measure whether or not it's successful is kind of a wasted effort and will just sit on the shelf. It's an advisory committee, so I figured the, I mean, my vision for the committee was it would come up with a report and suggested plan of action for helping minimize our impact on the environment and helping mitigate the effects of climate change. The village board would decide to implement or not implement or implement chunks of that. And then based on that, we would look over the next year at, okay, well, how's it being implemented? Is it actually having an effect that, that we want? Are there further steps that we should recommend or take based on that? I don't see it as a one, sort of a one and done deal.
And I think what we have here, Mike, with the, the powers and duties, you know, there's really kind of a two-part duty for the sustainability committee. There's the first part, which is to make the plan, and then the second part is generate an annual report based on the plan and how it's going and provide that to the village board. So, there's really just kind of two functions happening with that committee, and then whenever we want to update the plan at some point in the future. And then I think with the public transportation one, you know, that, I guess the Lynch consentance here is, it's duty is to research and evaluate safe, reliable, eco-friendly, and affordable public transportation options, both within the village and between other communities. So, that's kind of its charge. Then it talks about what, how it can do that, and then it says, the committee shall prepare and present a report to the village board on its work, which shall include recommendations, et cetera, et cetera. And that's kind of the whole scope of its definition of its work at that point.
Sure. Yeah. The village board can then, you know, once, once we get something up and running, you know, the village board might say, oh, well, you know, you could do the same thing on this type of transportation or we're having this issue, go, go work on it and make another report and bring it back to us. And that would all still be within the scope of this committee.
Well, I mean, the way, I haven't read all this stuff, but what Martin is describing, it sounds to me like the transportation committee, when they bring their report back, they'd be done, and then, of course, the board could say, you did a great job on that. We'd like to reappoint you and now have you study this other issue and bring another report back, for example.
That's true, too.
Or, or you could set them up as a committee. I'm just trying to imagine like the difference between a committee that will have a finite life and a finite objective or one that will have an indefinite life with indefinite set of objectives, maybe, so...
So, my question to Martin was, what's easier? Like, you know, is it easier to make an ad hoc committee and then just disband it when you're done, or is it easier to make a permanent committee and disband it when you're done?
Well, I, I would ask not what's easier, but what is going to be more effective in achieving your objectives. And there've been many, there's been many a committee created that doesn't do very much. And so, I, I think that you're going to be more effective by having a very clear understanding of what you want that committee to accomplish for you, being very clear-eyed about what it's, what, what you want them to do and what time period you want them to do it in and what kind of reporting you're going to ask them to do for you. You're going to get more out of that, in my mind, than just creating a committee that doesn't have that kind of clear charge from you all.
Have you had a chance to read the, the committee proposals?
I have not, so...
Okay, because I thought ours had clear charges personally.
And it might, it might, but I mean, is it, is it a, is it intended to be a committee that, you know, yeah, you're, you're a finite committee, here's your charge, get this mission accomplished, bring it back to us, and then you're done? Or is it something other than that?
That's not what the sustainability one was, because there was that ongoing measuring what actually was successful and, and planning further stages.
I'm just not sure how that works, though, because the way, I'm just not sure how they, how they do it on an ongoing basis. I mean, what, what, what kind of power are they going to have to do that?
Their advisory. All that they could do is make a report to the board. They don't have authority, they don't need pre-approval from the board for the board to make a decision or implement a policy. What they need is they need to, to, at the end of a first year, come in with a report that says, for sustainability and reducing our impact on the environment, we would recommend that the board do this, this, and this, that, that would reduce the village's impact on the environment, it would have X amount of cost, we think that these are cost-effective methods, and make a recommendation to the board to do that. If the board doesn't want to do that or thinks it's too expensive or that people came up with really bogus ideas, the board's perfectly fine to throw that out and if they want at that point, disband the committee or whatever, but my view is, is, is we're not going to reach sustainability and reduce or eliminate the village's impact on the environment for a year, so to set up a committee on a sustainability and not have any intention to measure what's accomplished or what the next steps are or, you know, make proposals to perhaps change tack because something wasn't effective, you know, is kind of pointless.
So, just to make, so I, so here's what I'm hearing. I'm hearing the first year, it's clear, study and report. After the first year, then it's watch what we do and then come back and tell us what you think about what we're doing? I mean, is that fair or...
That's part of it, and part of it would also be evaluating as things are going, is this the correct approach? Should we be doing something else?
So, if I'm hearing everybody correctly, it sounds like this should be defined, both of these, as ad hoc committees with timeframes, because what I'm hearing is, Mike specifically on yours, one year, do some studies, provide some recommendations. Second year two is analyze, review the data, how did we do, are we making improvements? I don't know that it needs to be a permanent committee. It can be an ad hoc committee, but it sounds like the ad hoc can be multiple years. Doesn't have to be defined as one. As Matt said earlier, we don't have to set a timeframe behind it, but it's not a new standing committee like the public works committee, where they're there consistently year after year after year. And it's up to the board then for us to say, you know, we want this committee to continue or we're comfortable with our approach, we don't need this anymore, but by definition, it sounds like both of them are ad hoc committees. I feel like that's the question on the table.
It could be. I mean, you, again, you could choose to say, nope, they're going to, it's going to have an indefinite duration, and then its mission beyond year one is to be a thorn in our side, you know, in a sense, to, to keep poking us to make sure that we're moving in the right direction. I mean, I, that's, you know, to, to, to watch what we do and come back and tell us both, hey, we, we're continuing to study this and we, we think you're doing fine, but we think there's some other things you could or should be doing, or we, we think you're dropping the ball on this or that. And so, the question is, is that, is that, that would be one way to, to go. I've never seen anything like that, but that doesn't mean you couldn't have one.
Yeah, Mike?
I, I just don't view this committee as being done a year. If you think that we can come up with a sustainability policy for a year that deals with wetlands and disposal of waste and energy generation and, you know, all the different impacts that we have on, on an environment, you know, water runoff, pollution, et cetera, and do it all effectively in a year when it involves, you know, probably zoning changes, coordination with public works, et cetera, et cetera, throughout all of these things, likely the first year is going to have, you know, we've, we've identified these low-hanging fruit. The second year is probably going to be looking at the next lowest fruit, you know? It's not a one and done. I don't see how you accomplish something as complex as reducing your impact on an ecosystem in a year and you're done and you just... as reducing your impact on an ecosystem in a year and you're done and you just, and walk away.
All right, Amanda?
Yeah, so, I mean, I know right now, I can't get trouble with transportation here in a year. Like, I don't think it has to be a year. I don't know where, but I'm fine with an ad hoc committee. I mean, just to move this forward, I'm, if, if that sounds right to everybody, then make transportation an ad hoc committee. I, I'm guessing that it would take about two years to accomplish our goal of getting that report ready to bring to the board to say, you know, we could do A, B, or C. What do you, how do you want us to proceed from there? And then we can always re-up it if we need it.
And Amanda, I know when, when you and I talked, we talked, there, there's going to be a lot of, a lot of research. It's going to have to happen, especially in the beginning, because we don't know what we don't know, right?
Right.
Yeah. Matt, did you want to?
Well, that's a really interesting discussion. I mean, you, you guys are talking about doing some things that, that are not typical. So that's why I'm struggling a little bit, to just trying to figure out kind of what bucket does this go in? And maybe I don't have a bucket for this, you know, this is different. That doesn't mean it's not something that you can do or should do. It's just a different, it's a different thing. Standing committees tend to be reactive, you know, they wait around for things to be referred to them. And then they look at them and then they, you know, these, these are intended to be proactive. Hey, we're charging you, we're giving you a mission to go out and figure out how to solve this problem and solve that problem. And, and you're choosing to say, let's do that through a, through a committee instead of for, typically, when the board does something like that, the board says, staff, you go figure it out. You know, we want you to help us achieve this objective. And now you're saying, actually, we want to create a committee to do that. And so it's just a different kind of approach, to trying to figure out, how do we develop a plan to achieve some kind of objective? How do we even define the objective? So it's, it's interesting. It's just a different, it's a different approach.
So, Amanda, I mean, an ad hoc committee could be, we could say, two years. We could always.
You could say however long, you could say however long, until, until the board determines that you've achieved the objectives. Or, you know, indefinite, until the board decides you're done.
Yeah, I mean, at two years, maybe, maybe they're not done yet. They're just scratching.
Well, and as, with, with Mike's description of his vision for that sustainability committee, yeah, I mean, that could be, that could be forever.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, to try and figure out how to really, that's, that's never going to end, that, trying to address those issues.
All right, Derek? Yeah? Oh, I'm sorry. Candy?
So the village had a community development authority ad hoc committee back, I think it was created around two, the year 2000. And I think it was disassembled, or whatever the correct term was, probably about 2016. But when I started in 2013, that committee was, I'm still at it, but they weren't meeting. But I think what Matt is trying to get at is, if it's an ad hoc committee, which that was an ad hoc committee, there might have been things that came up over the course of years that were different objectives. That was my understanding. So that's why they kept it open. Does that make sense?
Well, I mean, I remember, I remember talking to Mike Grace about that. I mean, at one point in time, there was a thought that this committee would serve a useful purpose, and it was created, and there were people appointed. And then it just kind of lost its way, and then it just stopped meeting, and it just fizzled out, and so.
But my understanding was, they were tasked, as it was an ad hoc committee, they were tasked with a specific, specific duty, which I'm not exactly sure what that was. But then a couple of years passed, and they were, they were asked to do another project, like, with the same, with a different type of duty. But they kept it open.
Well, you're talking about a community development authority. And that's, that's a specific statutory authority with, with, which a village could choose to use if it feels it's useful to use it, to carry out community development-related activities. And it was created, I think, with the thought that, yeah, this would be a, a good strategy. But over time, what I think the village learned was, we're not using them. We're not using them to carry out our community development activities. Instead, the board was just doing all of that on its own. And so it turned out that the board decided, we don't really, we don't need to keep reappointing this committee that never meets and doesn't do anything.
But I guess my question is, is if they were to be set, if they were to be set up as ad hoc committees, and like you said, they were, they have one objective, can the board now assign them another objective? Or do they create another ad hoc committee?
I suppose you could do it either way. I mean, I think the traditional model is that they're created with a specific mission. When that mission is completed, their work is done. And then if the board decides, well, we have another issue we need, then a new body is created. That's the traditional model.
That's what I'm just.
For an ad hoc committee, right. That's the traditional model for an ad hoc committee.
And I thought this was an easy one.
Yeah. So how, just to move, how would it change if we wanted to make this public transportation committee an ad hoc committee? What language in the draft needs to change to move forward with this?
Yeah. I don't know. I haven't read the, I haven't read the materials. I'm sorry, I didn't do my homework.
It's just the one page. I mean, I don't know, like, do, do you have to say, like, this will be an ad hoc committee somewhere in there, or?
Yeah, we would probably just tweak it so it would say something like, you know, we'd probably tighten it up that its specific power is to create this plan, and that it's an ad hoc committee, and it's time-bound by when this plan is completed. Which may be two, maybe redefine two years or whatever.
And could you also put in there, unless the board sees that it, there's more work that it wants it to do related to transportation?
Yeah, you could put language in. The board may choose to extend or expand or modify the mission and.
Well, I was, I looked into this a little bit, and the city of Pittsburgh, they, they did something similar to this. They set up an ad hoc committee and they produced a public transportation plan. And out of that plan, they ended up actually creating a committee, which ended up having some role with their public transportation that they ended up implementing with their busing and some other things. So they ended up having a function based upon some of the things that they ended up doing. And the same thing with some prairie, they did something similar, too, where they had an ad hoc sustainability committee, which developed an envi, you know, a plan. And now they're actually a standing committee as well. They implement, help implement the plan and follow up and do reports and make sure that things are advancing.
All right, so.
I mean, it may, maybe it makes sense right now, if people aren't comfortable having it be a permanent committee, that we just make both ad hoc committees, and once they're done with their plans, we reevaluate.
Derek?
Yes, I'd almost lean more toward making them permanent committees, just for the fact that neither, once you start either of these issues, neither of them are going away. Once you start public transportation, you can't exactly just stop it. And sustainability is the same thing, so I'd be more inclined to go with a just standing committee. I mean, I think it was Matt that told me at one point, there's nothing that we can't do under ordinance that a future board can't undo. So ultimately, if the future board wants to disband it, that's fine, but I think I'd be more inclined to go with standing, or permanent committees for these.
All right, where we're going? Which direction?
I'm very confused, so I don't.
I really don't have strong feelings either way about what kind of committee they are. The whole idea of them having a mission is still something I think somehow needs to be clarified.
I mean, I think, just, just in talking with Amanda, Amanda, I think has a clear sort of mission, what sort of the research and looking at options. That, that one, I'm more clear on as an ad hoc committee. And I, I get that it could be two years. I mean, but Matt, we could always up, re-up it, I mean, right? I mean, if it wasn't done in two years, you can, you can do, or they, they, they look at some other things, we can always extend that, correct?
I mean, I think you have a lot of flexibility to just decide what you want to create here.
Yeah.
I just think it's a good idea to understand what you're creating.
Yeah, yeah.
And to know what your objective is.
So, yeah, Amanda?
So I don't know, you know, I, I'm ready to move on, at least with the transportation committee. I'm, I'm happy either way, so I guess what seems easiest is probably, probably an ad, ad hoc, just because it, it does have a more immediate goal that we can point to, or a couple of goals, yeah. So I'm happy to, like, say, you know, to staff recommendation, like, to add ad hoc language in there. I can work on putting more of a mission statement also. And then can we bring it back for February, when I'll be here to comment? Okay.
Or you could call them a special committee, because that sounds better than ad hoc.
Okay.
A special committee to study, you know.
Yes, it does.
I think the difference is, in my mind, it's a specific mission, go accomplish, bring back, report, and then you've done your job.
Or a task force.
Or a task.
Oh, yeah, there is even better.
Call it whatever you want. The question is, is it, is it a finite, or is it a finite mission and term? Or is it, nope, you're just going to be there forever till we get rid of you, so that we can refer stuff to you, and then you can report back and.
Yeah, so.
Okay, so.
It's good if you're guys.
So Mike, where, where, where do you want to go with yours?
I have no idea. Honestly, I do not understand the difference between a renewing ad hoc committee that might become permanent and a permanent committee that might become temporary. And, you know, I'm not that subtle. I'm more of a hammer. Everything looks like a nail to me. And I don't get it. I don't know. I'm happy to make changes to the wording, but I want suggested wording, because I don't know what is, to me, this was a mission statement and powers and duties. If that's not the case, I'm happy to make changes to it, but I would like suggestions as to what they would be.
Randy?
Oh, yeah, yeah, Elise?
I have a question slash maybe how I'm interpreting the difference here. So example, Mike, for the sustainability committee, I see it's more of an ad hoc structure. You're created with the mission to come up with a sustainability plan and different metrics that we want to measure our, you know, progress on our reducing our carbon footprint, et cetera. And maybe the best format for actually doing that kind of annual report is through something like the Public Works Committee, if it's focused on municipal services, or maybe it just comes to the village board and it's reviewed at a board level. I guess maybe I see is the ongoing work of the committee to charge sort of staff with implementing the plan? Or is it we want to review the plan and kind of have control over changing it and, and run various initiatives or projects through that committee, like we do planning commission or something every single month, or once a quarter? Or is it more, here's the plan, village, now you implement it, and as needed, it's maybe every five years, the ad hoc committee is reassembled and you update the plan or something? Is that accurate, Matt, and kind of how that could be the difference of how that could be? It sounds like we have a lot of options, but.
You have, you have a lot of options, and again, you're, I don't want to put any unnecessary constraints on what you can do. I mean, you guys, if, you, you guys have a lot of flexibility to, to decide what you want here. And, and if you want something that, like, is drafted up here, I don't, I don't see a reason why you can't do that and, and say, this, this is a committee that will have indefinite life. It's, it's going, it's going to continue to operate until the future board decides to change it or disband it or what have you. And then this is the, this is the mission. I guess my, as a practical matter, just based on what I've seen over the last 25 years, my sense is that these kinds of bodies, I mean, they come out of the gate with a head of steam. And that can last for a little while, but it can't last that long. And so, you know, I, I would, I would be aiming for, you know, something with some objectives that I think are attainable over a two- or three-year period. And try and get as much as I could out of it during that time period, and then maybe start fresh, with another fresh head of steam. Because if you just create this committee with this mission statement, and, and then it doesn't get further direction from the board periodically, I, I, I just don't know how that goes five, six, seven years from now.
Also thinking about maybe some of the, the goals or objectives you have for these committees. So maybe, Mike, what comes out of the sustainability committee is that a sustainability manager or some type of staff person is created, and their job is to implement the plan across all departments in the village. Or Amanda, if we are able to secure, you know, some kind of public-private partnership to bring transportation, you know, then that's kind of operating more at a day-to-day staff level, maybe doesn't need community-wide involvement. Like, we achieve that. There's other things, like you said, you know, bike and pedestrian infrastructure can always be improved. And we need to, you know, have a good sense of where people's goals are, but that can also be addressed in the park and open space plan, too. So there's already some structures that exist and people that are here to help, you know, we're here to help implement the goals of the board. So just want to make sure we're not creating another layer that doesn't end up, you know, it's kind of duplicative of what already exists and the resources that are already here to help implement the goals of the board.
Can I ask, Elise, is there a sustainability component to the required comprehensive pant, plan as well?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, that's.
That'll be up for review. Through '23, we'll be doing a full update of the comprehensive plan and the parks and open space plan. So that could be kind of a focus, maybe, of the ad hoc committee, is let's really take the sustainability chapter of the comp plan and really dig into it and have a lot more meat on the bones of how can we, you know, how are we going to know we're successful a couple of years down the road versus just stating broad goals? And then that would be responsibility of somebody like me or Jeff to report back on, we reduced our carbon footprint by 10% or X percent of our municipal vehicles are now electric, something like that.
All right. Mike, any, any, a little bit more clarity, or not, not really, not yet?
Perhaps getting there. I mean, my main goal for this was, I did not see that the village had the capacity and its staff to do something like this at this point. And possibly, although I can't speak for what your training is, possibly the expertise, I don't know. I mean, and sustainability is a broad category. So I, my goal was to get people that are in the community that have those skill sets to contribute. And it wasn't to, to build an alternative structure to the, the, the village. I viewed you and Jeff in particular as having a large role in, in what this actually would eventually look like. Because, because building something separate from the village, existing village structure seemed like it would go nowhere, so.
Okay. So we're at, so Amanda, I think we, we kind of, between you and Martin, we kind of have a, some, some tweaks and bring back. Mike, I don't know what, where do you see, see us?
I don't know. I'll, I'll talk to Carlene and probably Martin and come back with something else.
Okay, give, give it a little bit more thought. Okay, does that sound fine to everybody at this point on this one? Martin, are you okay? Okay. All right. Do we want to talk about any of the other pieces, or? Or do you want to?
Yeah, whatever feedback anybody has.
Can we talk about the, I don't, I, maybe this would be a quick one, maybe not. There's one in here on the, the timing of the packet? Could that be a relatively easy one? What's our feeling on, on this one? And I think, you know, Martin makes a really good point, his last sentence. Amending agendas should, in this case, be for emergencies reasons only and not due to inconvenience. So if we do get them early, there's not going to be basically amendments to the agenda.
Right.
It just makes, creates a lot more work.
Yeah, and it causes confusion. I mean, people don't know what correct agenda they have. They didn't realize, they didn't get pieces of the packet, and it just confuses.
Now, I have heard in casual conversations, the Wednesday, I've. Now, I have heard in casual conversations, the Wednesday, I've heard Wednesday, to get the, give people enough time. I think, because a lot of us, you know, we get it on Friday, then we're spending the weekend, and, you know, probably most of us go over these things two, three times, maybe four times before Monday. So I'll just throw it out. What, what are people's thoughts on this? Mike, and then Amanda?
Wednesday seems acceptable to me. I was, I was originally thinking Tuesday, but knowing probably what the staff burdens are, Mondays are shot, I'm guessing, which would give you Tuesday to start putting stuff together. So it seems far more reasonable on the staff to have it by Wednesday. From my perspective, that gives me a little bit more time to look at things that I might consider to be confronta, you know, controversial, or I have questions about, or any of that. And gives me a couple of days to actually reach out to staff before, before the weekend.
Amanda?
Yeah, I like, I like Wednesday. I, I really feel, for me, it was a couple of issues. Number one is the number of business days that we have, you know, as we're reading the packet, because I sometimes have questions and I need to pick up the phone and have a conversation with someone, or can you walk me through this? Or what does this mean, or, you know? So having, you know, Thursday, Friday, Monday, that's three business days. That's really nice. That takes some of the pressure off of a flurry of phone calls on Monday. And the second reason is public transparency. You know, having been not on the board and, you know, there are things that come up where you want time to talk to people and say, hey, do we need to get people to go to a board meeting? Doing that over just a weekend and a day and trying to let people know and get the word out is really difficult. And I am all for transparent government, so I like it for those reasons.
All right, others?
One's just good.
Wednesday? Okay, do, do, you don't need a, well, do you?
No, what, what I'll do is I'll, we'll work on some language and we'll, we'll bring it back at a future meeting.
Okay, all right. Do you want to talk about the meeting times? Yeah, Mike?
I would propose a meeting time of six, at least for the Village Board, and 5:30 at a minimum for Board Committees, or Committees. The rationale, frankly, it's hard to get here even as a board member at five, when you work till five. It's hard for community members to get here. I understand Martin raised very good points about staff time at night. And I would be very curious as to whether or not, as compensation, we give staff time on other days of the week to take off early, or come in late, or if you can't do that this week, but you're in two meetings, maybe accumulate it and take an extra vacation day. I'm not here to work the staff into the ground, but I think it's also important that our citizens have a chance to actually get to meetings that they want to go to.
Anybody else? Yeah, Derek?
Yeah, I mean, I'd agree with a few of Mike's comments. I'd almost be okay with 5:30 for Village Board. Just having grown up in a household where someone was constantly gone on these meeting nights, you know, for the staff's kids, it's hard. So I'd probably lean a little bit more toward 5:30 just in that regard. And I agree that the comp time off is a, a good idea. No, they used to do that. I don't know if they still do. But I, you know, 5:30, I would say it sounds a little bit more reasonable from the staff timeframe. I do, I don't know if we can maybe push, you can't really push the public comment back because it's organized that way. But I guess I'd be more inclined just to stick with 5:30 across the board. And that just kind of gives the community some clarity as to when all these meetings are starting, as opposed to it's a Village Board meeting. This one starts at six, it's part board, this one starts at 5:30. Just kind of keeps it uniform and you do it.
Okay.
Would any staff want to comment on, on, you know, how we can make this easier on you?
I mean, be, be honest, if you like five, tell us.
I mean, normally our days end typically around 4:00, 4:30. And so staying till five is a very easy thing. We just, it works out very, very well in our schedules, no doubt about it. And Martin talks about that in, in the memo there. It is true, I mean, we do actually allow some flexibility during meeting weeks and that type of stuff. Sometimes we, if we can, we sometimes will try to take an afternoon of a Friday off or something. But be honest with you, we're all pretty busy, so that sometimes taking that time off just means you're falling behind farther somewhere else. But I understand the, the pros and cons of it all. We serve at the, at the, at your needs, you know, and, and I understand that completely. So we would make it work. I would make it work.
Do you have anything?
I agree with Joe.
Yeah, I think 5:30 sounds like a reasonable compromise, like keeping it uniform, because it does vary a lot. As a parent of a young child, it's definitely hard to be out sooner. And I kind of need to be, you know, I turn into a pumpkin after a certain amount of time as a breastfeeding mother, so I can't stay here for, forever. But the other things, yeah, just flexibility and time. I will say that Planning Commission has always been at 6:30 as long as I've been here. We typically don't get a lot of people coming unless, you know, they're here for a specific event. So I think maybe that time could be, that's something we could ask them to, if they'd be open to moving that up. I know a lot of folks like to go home and eat dinner and then come back, which is usually what I do those nights too, and just come in at 6:15 to get stuff set up. Yeah, so I think that sounds like a good...
And I think, Elise, on some of those things, we, we can move, if we know that there's going to be a group, we can move things around on the agenda later.
Yeah, I also wonder if we kind of continue with the hybrid meeting approach, that that provides some flexibility. People want to listen in and, you know, participate. They could still do that maybe while they're commuting, or if they're at work late, they'd have other ways to participate, not just being here physically at five o'clock.
And, and I'll just say just quickly, I mean, I, I like five. And the reason is, Martin makes some good points about the work-life balance. You know, we got several people who have young kids, but 5:30 is a, is a, life's about compromise, so I could live with that. Amanda?
Yeah, I was going to say, is there any rule that says we have to have the public comment period at the beginning of a board meeting?
It's, it is set by, it is set by ordinance, yeah.
But we're changing that.
Well, but we're changing that. So like, so I, I mean, that would be, if for families, I can see how a lot of people couldn't be here by five. If we had public comment around six or something like that, we kind of just put it in, or if people arrived and they wanted, or just, we could, frankly, we can allow public comment for each agenda item if we wanted to.
We could, yeah.
I mean, most of the time, it won't matter. I mean, but, but we, we do have options there. So my main concern would be then just making it as convenient as possible for the people that are here.
Yeah.
So, you know, staff, I mean, I like five o'clock. I don't have a problem with it, but I know some people do. I guess I'm open to 5:30 as long as that's okay with staff members. It means a little time hanging around, especially for people who can't just run home for an hour and come right back. They don't live close enough, so.
Anybody else want to weigh in?
Just one comment.
Yeah, Martin?
So one thing I wanted to make a mention of is, so the statutory bodies, so like the Plan Commission, Library Board, they have the authority to set their own time. They are autonomous from the Village Board. So just making sure that everybody is aware of that.
Okay. All right, so does that, Martin, I mean, does it, does it sound like everybody?
I have the to, I have total flexibility, so whenever, whenever you want.
So we could, we could compromise at 5:30?
For me.
Trying to give, give Martin some direction here.
Yeah.
5:30.
Okay, Martin, you want to try that?
I hope you do that. No, it'll stay five until we adopt the ordinance. Just so when the agenda goes back out, January 10th, it's five o'clock.
So Randy, are we going to give any consideration to the staff request?
Well, I think, so I, I think, Jerry, I mean, I think for some of us, and we, we've asked, I mean, I think the 5:30 is kind of the compromise.
I heard five.
From them?
I heard five, but they could make 5:30 work if they had to, but they prefer five.
Did I hear wrong?
That's, yeah, that's, that's fair, yeah. But, I mean, as Jeff said, I mean, we, we'll make it work for, and we, we definitely see the, the pros of it as well.
But the staff would prefer five, was really what I'm, what I heard.
Or we could start at three, I'd like.
The staff, the staff would prefer nine AM meetings.
Hey, for me, it could be four AM, I'm okay.
Yeah, because I know, you know, we have two and three hour meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's like it's late, and I can be off.
Yeah, it does, yeah.
I mean, it, whatever you want to do. But I just wanted to clarify that the staff has an opinion here. They were asked, they gave their opinion.
So, so let me, let me ask this. Could, could we live with five? And then if we sort of do, do some changing of the public, the public comment in the agenda that will allow people to sort of, who can't be here at five, I mean, make some accommodations that way? And Amanda is correct. I mean, we've kind of started doing this. If there is an item, we can let anybody speak at any time. So there's some compromise too. I, I am sympathetic to the staff, even us. I'd like to get home before eight o'clock or whatever.
Well, it's a long day if you're...
It is a long day. So, so that's a question. I'm okay with five too. And we make these other changes to the agenda that allows people to sort of...
That's my preference too.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know, but Mike has problems getting here, so.
Mike, can you live with it, you think?
I mean...
Well, my job's flexible, so yeah, I can do it. But I know that there's a lot of office workers whose jobs aren't flexible, and they're definitely not making it here at five, particularly if they work up in Madison. So I get it with staff. That's why I suggested, you know, flexibility and stuff. But at some point, you know, there's a good, we need to recognize there's a good chunk of people that are not going to be here. If they want to be here, they're not going to be here at five, because they just can't make it.
But I think we, we sort of worked that out by just changing some things around in the agenda so that they don't have to be here at five to go to a public comment, yeah. Carlene, are you okay with five?
I'm totally flexible.
I'm good at five.
I have no strong feelings on this one.
Jerry, you like five?
I, but I don't feel like I should have an opinion on that going forward.
Oh, going forward, okay.
But I'm just, I just wanted to recognize that the staff...
Yeah, I get it.
Has a long day.
Yeah.
Starts at five.
Yeah.
And we've been having long meetings.
Yeah.
And it's a very long day. And then the next day is really long, because you turn around and...
That's park form.
You gotta, you gotta get your bucket ready by Wednesday.
Yeah. Derek, what's, can you, can you deal with it?
Yeah, no, I'm fine with five.
All right.
I just want to make sure when we do the public input, that we're very clear when we adopt language changes to get the public input
Yeah, that we...
in the appropriate spots.
Yeah, so, all right.
One thing that I've seen communities do is have a public comment at the beginning and end of the agenda.
Okay.
So that could be a potential option.
Yeah, I have too. Okay. All right, yeah, Amanda? Yeah, and in the middle?
So, yeah, a couple of things. I, I mean, we can do a dedicate, you know, we can have a dedicated public comment period at the beginning, but we, what this would mean is making sure that if we get comments from people about certain agenda items, that we as board members say, can we move this later in the agenda?
Yes, of course, yeah, yeah, why not?
So just being more aware of that, or maybe as people come in, we have slips and say, I want to speak on this agenda item, and then we, I don't know, we...
We can do that.
We can work something out though to allow people, because I don't want them to come and comment at the end of the meeting after we've already voted on something. That doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, okay. All right, so, so what I'm hearing is, after a little bit more discussion is, is that we're, we're okay with five o'clock for now. And we'll, we'll, we'll change some things on, on the agenda, the public comment in particular, and accommodate people who can't get here at five, okay? All right, Martin? Good?
Yep, I got that.
All right, what else? Is there any? I thought I'd be home in bed by now, but no, I'm just kidding, you know? We got the packet?
Oh, yeah.
Is that it, Martin, or we, do I?
Do we need to do the hybrid meeting?
Yeah, do you want to say, do, I think, I think, Matt, you, you, we have you listed here. You're going to, you're drafted some rules, and you want to wait and...
Well, I didn't know we were going to be getting into this.
Yeah, I, I didn't, I don't know if we should, or, or...
My, my thought was that we were going to be, I was going to be working with staff, and, and I think Amanda was interested in me part of the discussion, to think about how to make...
When we get over there.
When we get at the new, at the new facility, because then we'll, we'll be able to make the technology piece fit into the discussion.
Yeah.
We talked, we did kind of draft some, some ordinance. You know, we went over that, I met with Martin and Matt.
We did need, I can't remember, did we have a revised document come out of that, Martin?
We, we did, yeah.
All right.
So, so I think the, the idea was that if we talked about it in advance and we had it in place, then as soon as we move in, it becomes active and we're just ready to go, you know? So we don't have to wait and spend more time, once we're in the new building, hashing it all out, so.
Is it ready for board discussions?
If, if, we don't have to do it today, but in fact, February might be a better idea for that.
Yeah, I mean, you know, some of this stuff's coming back to us, so we have time to sort of, we don't have to do everything tonight. Martin, did I hit everything that we wanted to?
I think so.
Okay, so...
We can come back and talk about it.
We'll come back and we can talk more about this, so. Can we get to our new business? And I bet Mike has been chomping on the bit waiting for this one, which is 10A, which is review draft tax increment financing policy. And that was in our packet too, that Martin provided. Martin, I don't know, do you want to say anything and...
Yeah, I can go over this, and I think Elise could maybe fill in some, some gaps too, because it started, what, about a year ago or so? I think Elise and Mike Gray started working on this policy, and then we, we talked about it as part of our goals to finish this handbook off. So the Village obviously has used tax increment financing, but has never had an actual written policy on how, what it, how it wants to, to use it and operate it. And so what's been created here is kind of a three-part handbook, which, one, and the first component explains what TIF is. The second part is the actual policy component of it. And so that outlines kind of the goals for how we want to use TIF, some of the, the procedure that's, you know, never been written down as far as, as how we take in TIF requests and then actually move it along a defined route. And then also have some criteria for financial, some financial guidelines and criteria, as well as how we want to structure development agreements. And so some of those components have been in there. I think some of that language has just accumulated in practice over many, many years of the Board, of the Village doing this. And so this is actually codifying some of these things. And then I think other things were taken from some other communities as well, so. And then the last part is just an actual application for a TIF request. So, yeah, this is just on for discussion and seeing if we're on the right track here and if there's any feedback or questions.
All right, Mike wants to start. Go ahead, Mike.
Excellent job, by the way. I really like what you put together. I have three comments. Page 148, which is Section 5C. You have non-economic benefits outweigh any anticipated taxes residents are expected to pay. Can we spell that out a little bit more? Would we actually get an estimate of what the added taxes will be? Now, the rationale here, and I, Martin and I exchanged a few emails back and forth on this. The rationale here is that because of the nature of the TIF, the tax... because of the nature of the TIF, the taxes on new development on, or new, uh, value in the TIF is sequestered for the duration of the TIF. So when we're, for instance, providing money for a housing project that goes into the TIF, uh, if it's a hundred apartment housing, housing development, and we're expecting fifty kids to be in that housing development, the other people in the school district, of which a major chunk of them are in, live in Oregon, are going to be paying the, the taxes for the school district for those people for the next twenty years. Similarly, if, if that hundred apartment unit generates five police calls a year and two EMS calls and a fire department call and I don't know what else type of calls, the rest of the village is, is, um, is paying for that. So what I would like to do is, is I'm sure that, that, you know, we have the statistics to do that, there, there needs to be, if we're going to be approving, you know, let's say we're giving a hundred thousand dollars to this hundred apartment complex, well, the hundred thousand dollars is probably the least expensive of, of all of the services and things that we're paying for the next twenty years for that, that apartment complex. We should at least have an idea of, well, we're, we're committing our residents to, you know, paying fifty thousand dollars of school taxes a year, and we're committing them to paying for EMS and fire services at X amount a year, and we should at least know what that is before we're rubber stamping and saying, oh, we're giving them a hundred thousand dollars, we're good, because it's a lot more than that.
Can I just briefly, I, excellent point, um, you know, I've seen, um, um, requests for that kind of analysis be done. It, the, the, I've learned it's complicated, um, I think I've been, I've, I've been at one of these discussions where some, you know, a financial consultant who knows way more about this than I do said that, you know, the state even has a way of compensating school districts for the loss of revenue when there's a TIF involved, so I, I would love to see that kind of analysis done, it's just, it's a, it's a highly complex technical analysis, and so we'd have to have somebody who, at least a school piece, the police piece, piece, then you're asking the chief to say, if we do this, what's the impact on our need for increased staff and resources and so on, and then translate that, so. Great data to have, but not easy to come by, um, it's just difficult analysis to do.
Is that it, Mike?
Uh, no, two more pieces.
Can I mention something on that same one? The five C that he.
Yeah, Carly, go ahead.
It would also be nice to have some examples of the non-economic benefits, you know, because we're saying one outweighs the other, so if, you, you don't want to just put the one end on some, maybe defining some of the non-economic benefits as well.
Sure.
I think they're both important.
All right, Mike?
Okay, uh, page one forty-nine, let me see. Uh, which would be six G, internal rate of return, which we're capping, um, at thirty percent, which, and it just seems like, man, if I get thirty percent, maybe I don't understand internal rate of return, but if I get thirty percent on a return on something, I'm pretty happy. Uh, isn't that high?
Seems high to me.
I don't know.
I don't know where it came from.
Do you recall, Elise, or that?
Not specifically that.
Yeah.
Piece, I know pretty much all these ones in this list, um, remember Mike and Matt and I going over a couple of different times and, and actually stating that these numbers should be discussed at the board and decide if this wants to be part of the policy, like seventy-five percent rule. Um, we've had that intent, I don't think we've actually been able to do that in any of the TIF grants that have happened in the last five to ten years, so, but that's a goal, but we're not really going to be realistically able to achieve that, that number be changed. Um, also, we've normally done the pay as you go versus upfront, so some of these are just policy discussions I think we should have with the board, and I did take a lot of examples from other communities and kind of Frankenstein this together, and then Martin cleaned it up more recently, so, um, we could look at what other communities have in terms of a cap on the IRR.
And, and my preference is for a policy that really puts more of an emphasis on making sure you have the information you need to evaluate proposal, including difficult information to come by, and, and put less of an emphasis on arbitrary caps like seventy-five percent of the increment, for example, because then as soon as you do that, you'll find that you are not following it, because it doesn't work, for example. It might work in some cases, but you don't know what the cap, what, you, until you see the specifics of the particular project, the economics of the project, you have a look, have an opportunity to look at all the other data, you don't know whether that seventy-five percent makes sense. So I like a policy that is oriented towards making sure you get the information you need to really understand the proposal and evaluate it and negotiate effectively, I like that better than a policy that puts kind of hard and fast constraints on, on you. The other thing I'll say, I'll get on my TIF horse here, so some, some TIF projects are easy to evaluate, and you can, you know, like, like an apartment building, because there are actual ways of analyzing rate of return. So there are projects where it is impossible to do a rate of return analysis, I've got a couple of them on my plate right now, where, you know, it's a, it's a business that is interested in, you know, it's not rental property, okay, it's a company that says, I, I, I need to move my new, my, my factory somewhere, I'd like to move to your community, what will you offer me, okay? And that's the world we're in right now, where companies say, what, what will you offer me? Because your neighbor over there, they're giving me this, so how much, you know, well, there's no rate of return analysis you can do to evaluate that. And, um, that's kind of my pet peeve right now is, how do we get away from that? But what I've found is that you're, you know, if you want that kind of development, you have to, you, you have to try and figure out, well, is that, what do I really need to do to be competitive, until I can convince my state and national officials to change the rules of the game, so I'm not competing against my neighbors?
And, and we, we've, we've been through that too, in, in recent years.
Yes, yes, and, um, and that's a completely different animal, so, yeah, like, so internal rate of return, that doesn't even apply to.
Right.
Like Tyson, Tyson.
Exactly.
Can't do it with Tyson.
Thinking, yeah.
Or like the surcharge that we, you know, just granted to the Viking Brew.
Can't do it with that.
That business may not, you know, be there, be there in that form that was originally presented, and the business plan hasn't been, you know, fully fleshed out yet, so hard for them to be able to give us numbers, and maybe that's right, you know, moving forward with less restrictive quantitative measures, that maybe what are the goals that the board wants to see achieved in the community, how can TIF advance those goals? I know one thing the previous board talked about was, you know, some resistance to giving TIF to market rate housing, so if that's a policy that you want to make, or you want to say that TIF, you know, grants should only be given to projects that provide housing for people that are at whatever, seventy percent area median income and lower, then that's something that we could spell out here.
Okay, Mike, you got one more?
Yeah, um, you referenced it, and I forget the exact point, place where, uh, if the developer gets higher than an expected rate of return that we split it on a fifty-fifty basis, that's actually section H under.
Seven.
Point seven.
Yeah.
So it'd be on page one fifty. When, when, at what point in the project do we actually know what the expected rate of return is for a developer?
That has to be negotiated in, in, in the agreement, and the one, I have had only a couple of projects with lookbacks, and so you need a financial consultant to help figure out, yeah, when are we going to measure, five years, ten years, sometimes it's two points in time, sometimes it's one point in time, that's subject to negotiation. I've found these lookbacks are very rare, um, I have one right now where it's, it's under discussion, what is going to be a lookback? And it's really just tied to, in that particular case, it's, let's just look at cost of construction, because the TIF, the TIF assistance is driven to a large extent by certain construction costs and estimates, and so the lookback is, okay, let's have you verify actual construction when the project is complete, and if it turns out that it, it comes in below the estimate, then we're going to make an adjustment to the TIF subsidy. But you can have more complicated lookbacks, where you say, we want to go ten years out and see what kind of rents you're charging, and what your occupancy rates are, so these lookbacks are complicated.
Has Oregon ever done them?
No.
Okay.
Not that I recall.
Okay, all right. I, I have one, it's seven F, the same page Mike was on, seven F is the village will retain a maximum of ten percent, uh, taxing for, for administrative costs. I just wondered, I don't know, I mean, you know, we got Matt, typically we have Lers, staff time, is that, is that ten percent typically enough for us?
That's, well, that says maximum, and again, I don't like.
Oh, yeah, maximum.
Too fast numbers.
Yeah.
So, um, that's, tends to be a negotiated term, the actual administrative costs, I mean, ten percent of what?
Yeah, yeah, it depends on.
Yeah, so, I mean, basically you just have some annual administrative costs, that could be a couple thousand dollars a year, or something like that.
Okay.
So.
So you're, we're fine with that?
I would take it out.
Oh, you would take it out?
I would take out all the hard and fast arbitrary.
Yeah.
Percentage.
Because Matt, I mean, right, we have Lers, has to sort of look at things, and we get charged for that, I mean, your time, I mean, they could.
Yeah, I mean, when we put these TIF deals together.
Yeah.
Um, one of the things we look at is if we're providing money on a, on a pay-go basis, for example.
Right.
One of the things we will ask is, do we need to factor administrative costs in and pay those before you get paid?
And we do that, and we can look at it on a case-by-case basis and evaluate what that number should be.
So, so Matt, you're.
I'd like it capped at ten percent.
So Matt, you recommend we take that out of this?
I, and, yes, again, I.
Okay.
I prefer a simpler TIF policy where.
Yeah, yeah.
The focus is on information and analysis and not on setting a whole bunch of.
Yeah, I, I guess my feeling on this was, the, remembering, is, I just want to make sure we get our cost covered, for whatever, whatever that means. But it does depend on, you're right, it, it, here it depends on how much it is and all that sort of stuff. I just want our, our, our cost covered.
So the way the, the policy is written right now is, here are all these things, but there's kind of an out clause basically throughout, which says, you know, the village board can do whatever it wants ultimately, regardless of what's written in this policy. So maybe these things, you know, these hard and fast rules, you know, the seventy-five percent rule and all that kind of stuff, maybe it just needs to be clarified that maybe the, the village will give preference.
Well, I would say, you know, the village will, wherever possible, attempt to retain, uh, some piece of the tax increment that it can then use for project, other projects, and things that, you know, I would just use more flexible language. I, certainly, the village will, you know, wherever possible, recover its own administrative costs.
Yeah, exactly.
Will recover not only enough increment to cover the cost of the specific projects, but also other projects in the district, you know. I would use that kind of language, but, I mean, I, I think, and again, I think Martin's right, the, the, these aren't things that you are forced to live with, because there's language that gives you the ability to override any of this stuff, it's, um, I think the, yeah.
The other places where our costs are covered are, you know, for TIF, um, applications, we always ask the applicant, if they're willing to cover the cost for Lers to review their application, so that's always been the case, as long as I've been here, that the applicant has covered that, and then also for these development, um, the developments like Lakestones, Prairie Brook Apartments, for example, we have a development agreement with them, and that covers all the time that I'm spending, Matt's spending.
Good, good.
Ben Wall, the village engineer.
Yeah.
That also has a, um.
Okay.
Mark up for administrative costs.
As long as it's covered, Elise, I, I just want to make sure that.
So it's covered in other places, it's not just the test.
Okay.
You know, wipes away all of those.
Yeah, got it, okay, all right. Anybody else on this? Amanda?
Uh, yeah, we had talked, oh, man, years ago now, uh, about a program possibility, about having, allowing homeowners to, you know, we could set up like a grant fund or something where they could, you know, apply for a, a type of TIF to, to upgrade the facade of their home or something like that, if it was particularly blighted or something like that. We, we, there are programs that communities have done where, where this could not be necessarily just for businesses or certain projects, but like homeowners could take advantage if they live in the TID, um, and I don't know if a policy like this would automatically allow for that, or if we, I mean, is it, would it be in conflict with this if we created that program in the future?
Well, I doubt it, but in order to create that kind of a program, it has to be built into the project plan for the specific TIF district.
Okay.
So this is not, this is, this is different from that.
This wouldn't, it wouldn't conflict with that, this, this policy wouldn't conflict with a program like that.
So we still have potential to do that, but only if we create a new TID in the future and we.
Or, or amend a, a current project plan to include a program like that, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, there's also other programs like CBG that offer the low or no interest, um, loans to homeowners to fix that up. I know there was an effort to do, to expand the downtown TID, to have some of the South Main Street, these are neighborhoods and, um, for various reasons, the neighbors did not want to be, the majority of the neighborhood did not want to be included in the TID, so that was actually taken out, but that originally included a lot of that neighborhood.
Hold on.
Yep.
Yeah, that was, I mean.
If I remember, so there was.
That was us, huh, Amanda?
Back in the day, uh, yeah, um, okay, yeah, because I mean, there was talk about it, but at the time, we were told that they couldn't do it because we didn't have that, that system in place, they said, you know, like, well, that is, that is something that can be written into TIDs, but because the village didn't have it set up already, that that wasn't actually an option.
And Amanda, we make some kind of application that's more directed towards homeowners, and what are your project costs and that kind of stuff? We end up having like a neighborhood that's included in, in a TID in the future.
The other thing too is, now our TIDs have cash flowed, so we haven't, either you're going to borrow money for a program like that, or in recent history, we haven't had that money to be able to fund a project or a program like that.
Yeah, okay, I, I just wanted to make sure that, that whatever we're putting in here isn't going to later cause problems if we decided to, to do that.
Okay.
Nope.
Well, I don't know how you're going to demonstrate an internal rate of return.
Yeah.
But, but the thing is, the, uh, you know, it says that if we determine that the non-economic benefits outweigh the economic ones, that's something we could do, we might decide that this blighted house really needs to be fixed, it, it's the entrance to our village, and we just thought, think it should be fixed up, so anything we can do to help the homeowner is better for Oregon, and, you know, like, there's non-economic reasons, we might approve something like that.
Okay. Anybody else, are we through with this for tonight? Martin, you?
So, I think we, we haven't reviewed this with, with Matt yet, um, wanted to get the board's feedback, so I think what we can do is, if the board is okay, we can take back your comments, and we can work with the staff here and Matt and, and try to make some tweaks, and we'll come back at a future meeting with the draft.
Okay, sounds good, everybody? Okay, all right, let's go on to eleven, future agenda items, anybody have anything they want to see, and anything, future agenda items? Yeah, Mike?
Are we at the point where we have to start thinking about virtual meetings again?
Hi, that's a good question, I, I know that the mask thing has been extended to February.
Can I ask Luke that?
Yeah, Luke might know.
What's the ICU looking like?
Yeah.
Not good.
All right, so if, if we get, you'll let us? So if, if we get, you'll let us know if there's, I mean.
I mean, is that something you want to talk about at a future meeting?
I'm kind of just trying to get a, a temperature of the Board here as to whether or not, I mean, it's clearly getting worse again, significantly.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I mean, I have, I have very limited exposure, I come here and I go a couple other places, I'm boosted, but I totally get what you're saying, so.
We could always put it on a future agenda item and discussion at that time.
Let's see if things kind of go the direction that they kind of have been and gets worse, yeah. Okay.
One, two, three, one.
Yeah.
Three weeks till the next meeting, so.
Okay.
Twenty-one days till the next.
Yeah, we'll see.
Could really be in the soup by then.
It could be.
Could be.
We may have Dean County Public Health issuing orders that require us to rethink.
Yeah.
And then we might have to do it on an emergency basis again, which is what we had to do the first time.
Yeah.
Gosh, that would be too bad if it happened in January.
Yeah. All right, we're on to twelve.
So should I put that on the agenda, virtual meeting discussion? Yeah, why don't we, next.
Next one. Does that sound all right, next meeting?
Or at least to see where things are.
Yeah, we'll see where things at. All right, we're on to twelve. All been waiting for adjournment, can I get a motion?
Yep.
All right, the second, Amanda?
Can we table that?
Yeah. You want, you want to talk TIF more? No. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Have a good Christmas, everybody.
Same to you.
Have a good holiday.